Hey, comments from the public. There's no public. All right, let's adjourn to closed session.
All right.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I can't hear you. I'm having problems again. So I'll work on it when I, you go into closed session. So I'll go ahead and open the chat when you tell me to. And then I'll try to have it fixed when you guys get back.
Okay.
Open session.
Right. Thank you. All right, I think he's here, just camera isn't turned on. All right, so we're gonna reconvene the the board meeting and we are, actually, I'm gonna have Matthew, go ahead and let people know that we have translation available.
Great. Welcome, everybody, to the school board meeting. So we do have translation available below by, if you go into, you know, obviously, I'll say this in Spanish as well. I'm just trying to figure out how, where it is.
I don't see it at all.
I don't see it either.
Um, are you guys seeing our translators in the panelists right now? Does anyone see them? Martina or Mariana?
I don't see them in the panelists.
There they are, I'll turn it on now.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much. So, good evening, everybody. Welcome to Palmsy Schools School Board Meeting. We do have Spanish language translation interpretation. If you go below, down below where it says interpretation, you can click on for Spanish. Bienvenidos a todos a la junta ejecutiva de Pedalum City Schools. Si usted quieren la junta en español, favor de ir por abajo donde dice in interpretation y pueden meter español para escuchar la la junta en español.
All right, thank you very much. So agenda number five point one is a public hearing. So we're gonna start the public hearing. Is this you, Matthew?
No, I think this is me.
Okay.
So do you want me to just give a brief excerpt about it, or you just wanna start the public hearing and end it?
Why don't you give a brief excerpt about it and then we'll start open and close the public hearing?
So basically, the district has moved into looking at doing a battery backup project one or more of our school sites. And we were able to apply for S chip PG&E S chip grants in order to get funding to help fund the cost of that. So under AB 4217, we're actually able to hold a public hearing, analyze savings that would be realized through the battery backup project. And therefore, be able to move more quickly through getting proposals in order to get under contract for that type of project. So the public hearing is basically for the public to have an opportunity to comment on the 4217 analysis. And that's all included with the resolution and the analysis down under section thirteen point two point one, where later we'll be looking at a resolution. And we'll be looking at analysis that was provided showing that the district would realize over two hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and fifty two thousand dollars worth of savings. So that savings analysis allows us, either SB or AB 4217, to move forward with this project without having a more formal bid process or procurement process. Is that giving up background?
Great.
Yeah. Does anyone have any questions? There's a lot of information. Under the agenda item that you referenced, but I just wanna give anyone an opportunity to ask Chris questions if you have them. No? Okay. So is that it? We're closing the public hearing?
Did we officially, did we open the public hearing?
I don't think we officially opened it.
Officially open it, Joanna?
Okay, I'm officially opening the public hearing.
Great.
Sorry, I thought I did.
Yes, so let's open the chat. We'll give people an opportunity to ask questions. So if anyone has something that they wanna comment on, this is your time, public.
If your Zoom name is not your first and last name, we appreciate you could put that in the chat along with your comment.
We also have a member, Jen Plethorick here, and Ashley, if you would make her a panel member. She can also help answer questions. She works for Terra Verde, and they're the ones who do the savings analysis.
I'll let you decide when to close the chat, Matthew.
I've seen any, I'm not seeing any comments in the chat. So I think we can go ahead and close it, close the public hearing.
Okay, so public hearing is closed. All right, moving on to item six point one, adoption and approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
I move to adopt and approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Okay, moving on to special recognition reports and presentations. Up first is the first day of school update.
Right. So just to kind of give a little background here, we had a overall, very smooth first day of schools, great day to be in Palmsy Schools. Students, teachers, and staff were very excited about the first day. We saw an incredible amount of enthusiasm and joy throughout the district. So what we've done is we put, we put together a district-wide video that we wanna share at tonight's school, at tonight's school board meeting, and then we're also gonna be sharing out later on this evening in Parent Square, so everyone can get a sense for how the day went. And I'm happy to answer any questions after, but it's about a three-minute video. So Ashley, you wanna go ahead and show that?
That was so cool. Wow, and you guys work so fast.
So I wanna just give a huge shout out to Ashley Collingwood, who threw that video together very quickly. We, a lot of us were taking footage, but all of Cabinet made it out to, I think, every single school site, except for the year rounds. That was footage from their first day of school, so we kind of integrated that in there. But it was a great day, very, you know, smooth, smooth day. And lots of, just like I said, joyful students. And, you know, people, I think, teachers, staff, administrators, students really taking to heart the whole concept and whole notion around week of welcome and the social emotional, building those social emotional responses. You saw lots of hands-on activities. You saw a lot of just the, the re-socialization and, you know, showing people around the campus and, and really getting, giving a chance for students to get to know each other. So there were some questions around, around our masking policy. And so I just wanted to kind of make sure that everybody, you know, kind of give an update and then, you know, you can also, this will also go out to families and, and teacher staff and our administrators as well. So we follow, you know, the, the California Department of Public Health, CDPH, has authority over the school district when it comes to public safety and public health. They, back in several weeks ago, came forward with their COVID-19 public health guidance for K-12 schools in California. And under that guidance, all public and private schools in the entire state of California are mandated to require universal masking while students are indoors at school. The two key reasons why the, why, why the requirement for the indoor masking. First of all, masks are one of the most effective and simplest mitigation measures to prevent in-school transmission of COVID-19 infections. And then number two, universal masking helps ensure that all students have access to safe and full in-person instruction and to as much instructional time as possible. In other words, if we have a positive case, we can isolate that case, send that, the positive case home, and continue to run the class on a modified quarantine. So in Pedalum City Schools, we've also added, so students at all levels are expected to wear a mask in the morning upon arriving to campus. So school site staff know that, you know, the child or students are ready to enter the classroom. Here, we had some bumps in the road this morning. We are working to, to remedy that. Students will be given outdoor mask breaks throughout the day. Obviously, you can't eat through a mask when they're eating, they're drinking, you know, or we're moving, any activity that can happen outdoors should be moved outdoors. But also, they're just, people need to be able to have a mask break. Now, we no longer have the three-foot, six-foot, nine-foot distancing requirements. So we call it courtesy distancing. So when it's safe to do something, you know, you're allowed, you have a much, a large space. We encourage, you know, students, they can take a, take a mask break at a recess, a break, lunchtime, that sort of thing. When they're in, you know, bigger groups, encouraging the outdoor masking as well. We do follow CDPH and Snowmaw County Department of, of Health Services Guidance as a school community. Most, you know, obviously, we're mandated, but we want, we truly do wanna prevent the spread of this virus and ensure a safe, vibrant, and full school year for all of our staff and students. So we're, we're asking our, our families to do this parent square survey every day like we did last year to kind of digitally monitor for symptoms, making sure it's just a very brief survey. We want everyone at the, at the, you know, kind of at the forefront of every day, thinking about, does my child have any of these symptoms? And if so, they should be staying home. So that's sort of the, the summary of the message that's gonna go home today, just sort of to reinforce that. Any, any questions about that?
Are we, um, do we have extra masks? Are we supplying, if a kid shows up without a mask? Do we have something to give them?
Absolutely. Yeah, we have masks. So most students show up with a mask, but if they don't, we have plenty of extra masks that we can hand to child.
What about both adult size and child size? So we've sent out both child and adult size to the elementaries and plenty of adult size to the secondary.
And here in all the classrooms as well.
What is it, a kid who refuses to wear a mask? Has that been an issue yet?
We didn't, we did not experience that today.
Good.
It was great to see all those kids, like, the whole playground full of kids with masks on. It was awesome.
I know.
Yeah.
They were happy.
Thank you for, for clarifying that, Matthew. I really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Right, any more questions or comments about first days of school? Saw some Camus and Tony out there.
I, I have to tell you, just, uh, the, uh, so I live by Grant School and I was meeting friends to walk at eight o'clock. Forgetting somehow. I did go back ways, but it was really, I mean, it was really wonderful, all these families walking together. And it was eight o'clock, you know, it wasn't, you know, five minutes before the start of school. And you just saw, you know, a lot of people were walking and, and seeing each other for the first time. And the kids were all in their little first day of school attire. It was really wonderful. I'm really glad we're back.
Yeah, you know, we heard just so many comments from, from students, teachers, staff, administrators. There's just this sense of, you know, we spent the last eighteen months. And it's been so challenging and to have, have students back and have life back in the schools felt really great. And I think, you know, it's sort of, we're cautiously optimistic that we can, we can keep this up with the help of our community and avoiding, we, we need to just be very vigilant in order for us to be able to continue to do this. So cautiously optimistic that, I, I think, you know, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a great year.
Thank you. I mean, I cannot thank all of you on this panel enough for your work in the past year and a half. Whether it was with our district, your previous district, just thank you so much and for giving of your time today and visiting each of the schools. So it's really appreciated.
Right.
Yeah. All right, up next, Ms. Babs Kavanaugh, Board Governance Handbook and Calendar Update Presentation.
So if I could, if I could, Babs, I just wanna just kind of frame this. I think when, on Friday, I, I was able to do this with, with the teachers and staff on our, you know, our morning Friday message. And I think it helps, helpful just for everyone to kind of put this into context. So Babs Kavanaugh here is a, someone that, you know, former, I guess, a CSBA trainer, and you can give your bio. But over the summer, we had the board and I, and Babs had held several study sessions or meetings to talk through board governance training, look at, take a look at our board governance handbook. And I think it's important to note, just that, you know, for the past couple of years, this board of volunteers here, our school board has held many community meetings, stakeholder engagement meetings, special study sessions. They've held office hours. They've been very active on district committees. And in this, this summer, we were able to really harness a lot of that, the information that they've been gathering to sort of create some draft goals and clear objectives. Core, you know, core beliefs as well. So I just wanted to kind of frame it that way. And then I wanna invite Babs to sort of speak to the process and kind of how we got where we are.
Great. Well, thank, thanks so much, Matthew. And, you know, I was giving a lot of thought to really what I wanted to say about the work that we did. And I think the first thing that I wanna say is how honored I was to be invited into this team. I was hired by California School Boards in nineteen ninety-nine because I was a very active parent in the schools. Having brought four children through all of those schools, looking at that video today, I just smiled. Our kids were at a lot of the different schools and, you know, having, and in nineteen ninety-nine, California School Boards invited me to be one of their governance trainers. And so I've had an opportunity to really travel throughout the state. I was part of an early development of a program that was based on their Masters in Governance Program. And it was called Single District Services. And Single District Services took the board governance training into individual districts to really attempt to customize the needs of the district. I know that it's been an incredible year. I also know that, that the Governance Handbook that this board had already was not part of this new team. I know Sheldon, you joined after that Governance Handbook was initially developed. And then you have a new superintendent, Matthew, joining the team. So when that happens, the value of having a Governance Handbook is that it's a really good orientation document. But what we did over the course of, I actually calculated, we were twelve hours together. All against study session, public meetings. But what we did is that we, we talked about from individual perspectives, what's unique about our district, what are your hopes and aspirations, each one of you individually, with the goal of bringing all that together in one view, understanding that, you know, to be an effective trustee, it's really important that you think about the entire system. And oftentimes, when you campaign, you campaign for a particular reason or interest. But that when you join this team, you become part of one of five and you have one employee. So that the extent of your school, your school district and understanding that there's seven thousand plus students that you're responsible for, but still you have one employee and that employee's responsibility is to execute or implement the board's vision. So this was just a wonderful opportunity. We, we built on, again, individual aspirations and also having had a really strong foundation. You already had a Governance Handbook. So the value of a Governance Handbook is that you document ultimately agreements that you make in this team of six. And so one of the things we did is that you had this Governance Handbook, but we also looked at additional protocols that could really support your work together. So the categories that we looked at were preparing for board meetings, for conducting board meetings, for your board structure and operations, board accountability, and then you as board community leaders. And we identified a series of protocols that could really support your ability to be really effective as a governing body. And we spent time talking about each one of those and talking about what do you wanna demonstrate in terms of your own roles and responsibilities? And looking at each one of these protocols, and then what's the agreement? And in the context of that, we spent some time asking Matthew what he needed from the trustees to be really effective. We asked trustees what they needed from Matthew to be really effective. And then we asked for what you need from one another to be effective, really talking again about, you know, being clear about the, the lens you use as you make these really important decisions on behalf of the students and your community. So it was a wonderful, wonderful time that we spent together. I think we really grappled with some important issues and were again reminded about roles and responsibilities. And through that course of that, we developed and drafted a Governance Handbook, which is coming before the board today. It was a handbook that you all contributed to and worked on. And the other piece that we also worked on during the course of these three days was to develop a governance calendar. The governance calendar was to look at a twelve-month window and be able to say, if we wanna be really effective, if we wanna make sure that we're aligning all of our resources, what are the different things that happen each month to be able to support that? And a big effort and intention in doing this was to say, it's really important that, that this board look at priorities and look at processes in, in advance of doing your budget development. So that what are your priorities are always driving that budget through the LCAP process, through the annual goal-setting process. So there's two products that are coming in front of the board today. And one of them, again, is this Governance Handbook that includes your mission, your core values, your priorities. It includes really clear descriptions of roles and responsibilities. And then it digs deeply into a series of protocols that will support how you're working together. The value of that is also not only that you've documented this, but that you use it as a resource that you annually look at it to make, to re, re-adopt it, but also it's a really important orientation document for new trustees who come on the board and say, well, how do we do that? So there's documentation about very specific steps for doing your work together. The Governance Calendar, again, we'd like you to be able to look at that and review it and, again, adopt it as a calendar that will guide each one of your meetings and create clarity about what are the priorities you'll be looking at on a monthly basis. And I think what I do is just open it up to trustees and to, certainly to you, Matthew. You know, any feedback you have in terms of the time we spent together and what emerged from that time.
I think one thing that was really important is that in all our conversations, we discovered that we were kind of, we have a lot, we have the same values and we have the same belief in what's important. And I think that's really reflected in the handbook.
Caitlin, anything you might add?
No, it was just a really good experience that really, I think, grounded us. And I think it came at a perfect time with our new superintendent and, and coming into the school year in person. It was easy to feel like there was nothing to grab onto during COVID. It was always something new, always something nebulous. And this was a really good experience to start this new chapter.
Sheldon, how about you? What might you add?
Muted.
Did we lose Sheldon?
I think so.
Yeah, maybe he's gonna log back in. Um, well, I'll share. I thought, I mean, I didn't really know what to think going into it, you know, I was like, this is gonna be twelve hours and just like professional development, but it wasn't. It was great. I feel like we have all these ideas in our head and all these things that we wanna do, but not, I feel like we didn't really have a clear sense of how to go about them. So it really helped just to kind of get them all out and appreciate you, Babs and Matthew, for helping us, like, get those thoughts organized and headed towards a path where we can put some action behind it. I also thought it was really important, not just with our new superintendent, but like mostly new cabinet. Just to give Matthew some direction with our new folks, so.
Well said, Joanna. Thank you. Maddie, how about you?
Um, well, I, I thought the process was wonderful, you know, I've, one of the things that really struck me, just for me personally, was, you know, mission statements, vision statements, goals and priorities. Rarely have I felt that they really expressed the emotional and just, you know, the way that people really feel about things. And I felt like with this process of five, the six of us working together to, you know, it felt like we really were contributing in a really significant and deep way around how we came to the, these decisions on the vision. Sorry, the mission statement, but also our priorities. It was just such a thoughtful collaborative process that I really appreciated at this point in my life to really have something that I really felt we all were intensely invested in. So thank you, Babs, for allowing us to do that.
And Sheldon?
And Sheldon?
Yeah, can you hear me this time?
You can.
Good. Um, yeah, uh echoing what everyone else said. Uh it was a great opportunity for us to have just an in-depth discussion to come to an agreement on what our most important overarching priorities are. And so I I think it articulates it well, and I'm glad that it's before the public now so that we can get any more input uh tonight. And I think it will bring a lot more um coherency uh among a lot of processes that are otherwise can be a little bit siloed, like LCAP, like budgeting, all these uh important processes. I think, I hope, this can bring some coherency between them.
Yeah. I really important, Sheldon, and I think that that's the the um the work that I've been doing over the last several years around this book that we've been involved in called Governance Core just talks about coherence and cohesiveness and really, again, when you're doing the day-to-day business or even the month-to-month business, it can seem somewhat siloed. And to be able to really align it and to have it be clearly outlined, what are the steps that are gonna happen to get there? I think it's really important process. So thank you. Thank you all. And I want to ask Matthew also to weigh in as our sixth member of this team.
Thanks, Bab. Bab's, um just to sort of build on a little what what Joanna's mentioned and really everyone. I thought it coming into and being a new superintendent, the way that I, the way that I I see things and am able to to to, you know, really be successful in in my role, I really needed some time with the board to, um you know, again, I I saw there were lots and lots of ideas out there. We all have some great ideas on how to how to meet the needs of students and and I needed to get it a little bit more focused and concrete. And I think that through lots and lots of discussion, and that's why I bring up the background of actually, you know, a couple of years of lots and lots of input. It was time to 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 get some some things down on paper and and you know, not only mission statement and core values, but some some really clear object, some really clear clear goals and then some objectives. So to kind of hold myself accountable and say, okay, here's here's really what we're, what I'm being asked to do. And so then I can, you know, work with cabinet administrators and teachers and staff and say, here's, here's where we're going is, you know, everyone, we want to be part of part of movement. My, you know, I'd like to look back in five years from now and say, wow, we really, we really moved the needle. We really made a difference in in this in this community and in this district. And so that was my goal for for doing this governance training and and it was, it was a great experience. And I I thank you, Babs, for 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 guiding us and shepherding us through that. And to the board members for having a little bit of faith and saying, wait, we're having three meetings in July to do this. And I think it, I think it turned out and we have a nice um draft of an of an end product. So I'm excited to to get that shared out tonight. And if I've, I've started sharing out, you know, bits of pieces to to teachers and staff and this past Friday, did a little bit of that as well, but looking forward to to um to seeing it on paper tonight, too.
Good. Well, and and I agree, Matthew, just being able to have this, I mean, there was a foundation there. But again, anytime a new team comes together, we have to revisit and kind of reformat and and pull it all together. So again, I would say thank you to you all to be able to work directly in my community. It's rare that I get to walk down the street versus getting in a plane or getting in a car. So uh it was a, it was really a treat for me. And as I said, a real honor having my children go through these schools and how much I'm attached to the health and well-being of our community. So I say thank you to you all very much for inviting me, including me in this.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate that as well. I mean, you're part of our community. So then to have you as if it's as a facilitator, I feel like it just added an extra layer to it. Yeah. So thank you. Anyone else have anything to add?
All right, well, bye for now, Babs.
All right.
Thank you.
We'll miss you.
Yeah.
Bye.
All right, so this is Jason, I wanted to say Matthew, Jason, right? Announcement of new principal at Cherry Valley.
Thank you very much. So Liza isn't here today, but um but I did wanna, we're pleased to read our announcement that we are pleased to announce the assignment of Liza Ikerd as the new principal of Mary Collins School at Cherry Valley. Liza began her duties at Cherry Valley on Monday, August second, twenty twenty-one. And with the school already in session on a year-round schedule, they were ready for her to get started. Liza's worked as an educator in Petaluma City Schools since nineteen ninety-eight. She has extensive instructional leadership, instructional and leadership experience with an emphasis on environmental education and project-based learning. Serving as a teacher at Cherry Valley for over eighteen years, the move back to the special schools feels like a homecoming for Liza and many others in the school community. Liza has spent the last three years serving as principal of McNear Elementary School. Her tenure as principal of at McNear was marked by a highly collaborative relationships with parents, students, and staff, effective use of restorative practices with students, and partnerships with local environmental education providers. Most recently, she compassionately and resolutely led the school community through the challenges of the pandemic. Ms. Ikerd is excited about the road ahead for Mary Collins School at Cherry Valley. She plans on listening carefully to stakeholders as they work through the challenges of the upcoming year. Liza's ex- is excited about supporting the school with implementation of the recent math and science adoptions. Most importantly, La- Ms. Ikerd looks forward to revisiting the mission, vision, and tenants of the school community to ground the work ahead and the school's organizing purpose. Please join us all in wishing Liza Ikerd and the Mc- Mary Collins community the best in the years to come.
Welcome, Liza. All right. Moving on to comments from the public on non-agendized items. Uh we can go ahead and open up the chat while I'm reading um the statement, since I think most everyone here has heard this before. So let's go ahead and read it. Under Government Code Section five four nine five four point three A, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items period. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comment, and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four-minute per person limit or a twenty-minute limit per subject matter.
Okay, so the chat is open. If anyone has a public comment on a non-agendized item. There will be time for comments on agendized items later on in the meeting.
And again, if your Zoom name is not your first and last name, we ask that you put that in there. So Matthew, I'll let you determine when to close the chat.
Give people about ten more seconds. See one comment. Okay, I think we can close the chat.
All right. Looks like we have Peter Costas from SCO with an update.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. So um I just want to um just take a few minutes just to acknowledge, you know, all your teachers, all your classified staff, all of your admin and and you, the board, you know, for um everything you've done for your students over the past year. Which is um you must have been under incredible pressures. But um and then again, you know, acknowledge you for laying out the groundwork for this upcoming year. And Matthew, uh from that video you showed, it sounds like you guys got off to a really good start. And I've got a couple of boys that I mentor that go to Casa and and they're so excited to be back at school, just the social aspect of it. So good job, everybody. Um and also, just again, I want to congratulate Matthew Harris for being the new superintendent of Petaluma City Schools. I think it's a wonderful choice. Uh another acknowledgement is um to Casa Grande High School. They're one of three schools um in Sonoma County, along with uh Elsie Allen and West Sonoma County High School that applied for and was granted this Haas Foundation uh grant to uh begin planning for like a transformative high school. And there, those those three high schools are gonna be meeting to do some pre-plan about what that might look like. So that that's great. And another school to acknowledge is uh McNear. And um what I understand from McNear is they're piloting an an environmental uh learning uh literacy program and making um the environment, environmental learning uh of a focus of of the school for this year. And that could be a pilot then for for other schools. So I think just exciting stuff going on and just um finally, um I'm sure maybe you received an invitation from uh Dr. Harrington about the Legislative Roundtable that's gonna be happening, yeah, October sixth with Mike McGuire and Mark Levine and Jim Wood and Cecilia Agrew Curry. So hopefully, you'll be able to hopefully, it'll still happen. There's, there's, there's a luncheon and then we'll be hearing the panelists. And again, finally, just uh thank you for your service. Best, best wishes for this year.
Thank you, Peter.
Thanks, Peter.
Thank you, Peter. Always nice to hear from you. All right, so report on activities and correspondence of school board members. Let's see, we were able to get a lot done, again, virtually and some in-person. Um the PCS Welcome Back Breakfast Youth Truth Webinar, Board Governance Handbook Revision, Board Core Values and Goals and Objectives Meetings, Introductory Meeting of the Cool City Challenge with David Gershon and Delinda Fisher, NAACP Education Committee Meeting, NAACP General Meeting, Petaluma Ad Hoc Community Advisory Committee, and the Kenworth Back to School Webinar. Does anyone um want to share something that was significant or you'd like us all to know from one of those events? I'll give everyone a minute or two, if you like. Go ahead, Ellen.
I went to the Youth Truth um webinar and um it was pretty interesting. They were just talking about overall the results from um their surveys. And there were a couple of things I found that were really interesting. First of all, one of the questions was um what makes it hard for you to do your best in school? And um the two top ones were mental health and home distractions. And the group, the group of students um that talked about mental health as being a contributor to making it difficult was the LGBTQ community, those students. Oh, there was a lot of different students, but those students were the majority of the mental health issues. They um also talked about the workload, the feeling of burnout and lack of engagement. And what I really, what as a retired teacher, what I really liked to hear was what what they're looking for, what can they make. And they talked about wanting meaningful and relevant curriculum, which is something we've been talking about a lot. They want higher levels of rigor. They want the expectations to be higher. And they also are really clamoring for meaningful relationships with their teachers. So I thought that was um was pretty interesting. There was also they talked about the change of post-high school plan since COVID has totally changed. College plans to go to college declined. They talked about the reason why some of their plans have changed is the need for more counselors and more help with applications, et cetera. They talked about the need for more CTE and more hands-on courses. And they want more opportunities for internships and on-the-job training. So and they also, and this was really spoke to me, they talked about wanting to see follow-through that um they basically, students are saying, don't ask us if you're not gonna do anything with it. You know, we're filling out these surveys, you know, you're asking us our opinions, but then it goes nowhere. So that's what I took out of that, and I thought it was really interesting.
All right, thank you. It's always good to hear student feedback.
Yes.
Maddie?
Uh yeah, I just wanted to comment on the Cool City Challenge, um because I I think I kind of got us involved. I know I got you involved, Caitlin. So, okay, so the Cool City Challenge, I um I got a uh uh, you know, an invitation to it, it was just an introductory meeting. And it's, it's something that the city's involved with, with Delinda Fisher. And so um, you know, just being a resident and being concerned about, you know, global warming and getting our city um carbon nu- neutral. I went and it was, it was very interesting. It's very grassroots, very much, you know, like starting with on what they call a block challenge. Um and just, you know, having, I think they call them captains. You know, just in your neighborhood, choosing four or five neighbors and talking to them about you know, uh how can we encourage the city? What can we do as individuals and also as a city to um become carbon neutral? So he went over, David Gershon is the um the brains behind this. And so it was just, it was a webinar, it was a actually a Zoom meeting. And um so he, um I asked at the end, he asked for any questions and introductions. And so I asked him about if he had ever um talked to school districts, you know, and have school districts ever been involved as like a a block or a resource of some kind. And it seems like, talk about silos, you know, it's like the city over here and the schools here. And yet, you know, we're, we're completely interrelated. And so um so he thought that, and so he thought that was a really good idea. And so he said, let's have a meeting and strategize how we might be able to use um our students, our schools, our staff to work towards carbon neutral. So this idea is that we would move California to be carbon neutral by twenty thirty. And it's very much grassroots. It's very ambitious. It's very idealistic and um and hopefully doable. And so um I think Caitlin and I are gonna be on an informal uh, you know, meeting, just kind of have, you know, just thinking about strategies and and hopefully somebody from maybe district admin would be able to come just to kind of get an idea of of um if it's something that we can even do. So anyway, it's a really cool project. It's very different. So.
See, Maddie, now the new volunteer, now that Gary's gone. I see that you're now volunteering people now that Gary's gone, taking on that role.
Well, Caitlin, actually, Delinda said during the meeting that Caitlin had, was already a cap, one of the um the cool captains, which of course she is always a cool captain.
Oh, she did that? Oh, yeah. I love her, but.
We're, we're not gonna get messy right now. Caitlin, do you have something to share?
No, I did the same. I did the same workshop a week later and um I'm very excited to be involved with my block, but I am not a block captain just yet.
Well, I think it's great. I mean, the timing, I mean, later on, we'll see in the consent, is it the consent agenda or is it individual? I'm so sorry about, you know, the buses, micro grids, like there's a lot that our district is doing. And I've been trying to share information out. So it's great that you're formally doing that, Maddie, with the city. Sheldon, did you have anything you wanted to share from any of your activities?
Not this time.
I just have something really short. Um started working, Maddie and I, with the NAACP Ed- Education Committee. And it's just, we just had one initial meeting, but just hearing um the needs of other school districts and how some of them are the same as our students and some are different and just, you know, like Maddie was saying, starting partnership citywide, but then as well, countywide diversity and equity and all those types of initiatives. So. All right, so net, thank you, everyone. Next up, comments from the public on consent items. Same spiel as before. Same spiel as before, I'm going to spare you and not read it all over again. We'll go ahead and open up the chat. Matthew, I'll let you determine when to close it. This is again, if you have comments on anything that's on the consent agenda.
I'm not seeing any, any comments, let's give people about 10 more seconds. If you've got a comment for the consent agenda, anything on the consent agenda? Okay, I think we can close the chat. No comments, no public comments.
All right, thank you. Moving on to approval of consent agenda by consolidated motion.
I need to move to pull 11.2.1.3 from the consent agenda. So I have to abstain on it.
Second. It needs to be seconded.
All in favor? All right, so.
Now I move to approve the consent, consolidated consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Right. Any questions on anything from the consent agenda?
Just the point of information, Chris, on the buses. I recall that we won a grant from, I think it was VW Settlement for five buses. Where are the other 10 coming from? This is fantastic, by the way, love it.
I'm looking at it right now. We got another grant that we were awarded and that we had applied for. And it is paying for 10 more buses. It's also about $900,000 for infrastructure improvements because obviously we get 15 electric buses, we need charging stations. So we have two charging stations right now that were kind of being loaned to us. And we're working with PG&E on getting the infrastructure. So they have to bring in additional power and a whole new meter onto the campus because that, the metering for the charging stations is at a much lower rate than we'll pay for everything else on that site, my campus, I mean, facility. So anyway, so this PG&E is to move us forward, getting the infrastructure to the site. So PG&E has a lot of work to do on their side of the meter, if you will, to bring in a new meter. And then once that's there, then we have this other grant that's going to pay for the 10 more buses. And that's going to pay for the work on our side of the meter. So then we have to run electrical for all the new charging stations and upgrade a switchgear. And so, or actually, we'll be adding a switchgear. So there's a lot of work both on PG&E's side of meter and on our side of once they put the meter in. So we do have an additional grant. I just can't recall the granting authority off the top of my head. The last one was a VW grant for five. And I just can't think of the grant name, but yes, it's like $4.2 million, it's a lot of money. So we're super excited. 15 buses is, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I thought five buses was really good. This is fabulous.
Very impressive.
Yeah, yeah. Your grant writing is like stellar.
I will say, I have to give full credit to Marsha Short, our Director of Transportation. I only can take credit for supporting her, but she's really, she's really the, she's done an amazing job getting these grants, so I need to give a shout out to Marsha. I can't take credit other than supporting her in doing it. But she's done a great job, so I can't say enough about it. Anyway, so we're super excited, so thank you, Sheldon, does that answer your question?
Yeah, thanks.
That is exciting.
It's going to significantly reduce our carbon footprint, if you can imagine. It's going to take us another year or so, it could take us some time, maybe 18 months to get everything in place. But 15 of our 26 buses.
That's amazing.
Yep, we're just excited to get it rolling.
Unintended there.
All right, anyone else, any questions? Vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, and then it was item 11.2.3, correct?
Point 1.3.
Point 1.3, all right, any motion on that?
I move to approve item, actually, it's ratification of warrants, right?
It's 11.2.3.
Yeah, I moved to approve.
No, it's 11.2.1.3, the thing was side by side.
Right.
Oh, yes.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Most abstained?
Abstained.
All right. Moving on, comments from the public on action items. Same deal, open the chat, Superintendent Harris will decide when to close it.
Yes, Pam, the question in the chat, the tobacco resolution part of, part of the action items, yeah. Okay. Seen one person in the chat. We'll give everybody about 10 more seconds, if you have something in the chat, you put your name and the agenda item or topic. Okay, I think we can close the chat. We've got one person who would like to speak, Pam Granger, on item 13.3.1, approval resolution of Board of Education opposing the use and sale of e-cigarettes and electronic vaping devices.
Good evening, Cindy Council, Pam Granger. I've got this mixed feelings. I don't know how many of you had a chance to look at the draft resolution that will be presented to you, I think it's 13.3. The hooray part is that the resolution is there and with some lovely whereas additions that modernize it. The eh, meh part is of the seven elements that the draft resolution includes, probably the top three most important ones are not being reflected, so I'm conflicted. The whereas is the findings, the support for those three items are available. Probably the most important thing that relates to youth use of tobacco products of all kinds, but particularly vaping devices is flavors. The preponderance of flavors, flavors are mentioned as the fourth item on the draft. And yet, there is no, in the support part, there's no, there's no mention of the fact that the Pedaluma City Schools Board would support prohibiting the sale, manufacture, and distribution of flavored tobacco products. Also, another item that was left out is the sale and manufacture of vaping devices, period. And the third thing left out is setting a minimum price and minimum pack size, which are important to affect the cost of products so that we know with youth, if things are more expensive, youth are more price sensitive and less apt to purchase. So those are three very important elements that we will be asking the city council to include. And I have to say that it's good, what is being presented for your consideration are four wonderful things, that's prohibiting the sale of tobacco products in pharmacies, restricting marketing, so no using coupons. And the only reason you'd use a coupon is to offset an increased price, which is missing. Reducing the concentration and density of stores, excellent. There's about 60 in Pedaluma and at one per 2,000 people, we should be more like, well, zero, but 30. So that's excellent and not renewing any licenses if they're within too close a proximity to schools. So those are all four very good things, but without flavored tobacco products as being probably the A number one most important way to reduce youth uptake. I apologize at not being thrilled. I'm dumbfounded and I feel so badly because I had a chance to review this, you know, when the agenda came out several days ago. And yet, based on an exchange of how did impact Sonoma and tobacco-free Sonoma County feel about the statewide recommendation? When we said yay, we liked them all, I guess it just didn't occur to me that they wouldn't all be included. So those are my remarks, thank you very much for listening.
Can I, can I ask a question, Pam? Could you repeat the three things that were left out? I have prohibit flavored tobacco products. Prohibit vaping products.
Right.
And I don't know what the third.
Yeah, that's okay, and it would be the sale, manufacture, and distribution of them. I was sort of shortcutting, Maddie, you missed the meeting when I talked about those.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and the third one was to set a minimum price and minimum pack size. So as an example, Sebastopol just set a minimum price of, you wouldn't have to pick the dollar amount, but they sent a minimum price of $10 a pack of cigarettes and commensurate with other products and a minimum pack size of five. Again, it is particularly important with the little mini cigars that are so cheap. So those are the three items that the draft from the CSBA, the California School Boards Association, had included that I would recommend, I would recommend as a representative of Tobacco-Free Sonoma County Community Coalition be put back.
And Pam, hey, Pam?
Yes.
Thank you for the, for your comments. I just want to make sure that we're all clear because I'm a little bit confused. This, so when you first came on, you said, you know, members of the city council, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. This is Pedaluma City School Board. And what you're asking is for a resolution that, you know, in support, that we say, be a resolution to the city to say, hey, we support this anti-tobacco initiative resolution. But it's really the city of Pedaluma that's going to be setting much of what you're talking about. The school district has zero control over, we can, we can do a resolution in support, but we don't set prices on much of what you're talking about. I just want to make sure that we're all clear and on the same page about that.
Absolutely, Matthew, the, the hope is that.
I'm actually gonna stop this for now because we did use your whole four minutes during public comment. And we're going to be talking about this later on so we can have this discussion in full.
Thank you.
But, thank you. All right, so, where are we? Action items, item 13.1. Jason, I believe this is you. If you want to speak to us.
Yes, 13.1, so this is a provisional internship permit request for Sophia Bin to teach physical education. Because the teacher that was teaching this in grades nine through 12 resigned and the open pool for hiring to that position didn't have any qualified, fully credentialed candidates. And the only qualified candidate does not have the California Teaching Credential. So she's completed all of her coursework and she's intern-ready. And it's contingent upon the issuing of the provisional internship permit.
Is that the same for Lindsay Silver?
That it's a different position, but it's the same situation. You know, we have, we have so many positions open that were, you know, these were two positions that we couldn't find somebody qualified to teach it. So that is also the next item with Lindsay Silver, which was teaching a pre-K as an education specialist. And it was similar thing, a resignation and the pool didn't have any qualified credential candidates. So she has completed her coursework and she's ready as an intern as well upon the issuance of the provisional internship permit. Okay, any questions on this?
All right.
I move, can I combine them? I move to, okay, the 13.1.1 and 13.1.2 provisional internship permits for Sophia Bin and Lindsay Silver.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, item, thank you, Jason, item 13.2. This is back to Chris, the micro grids.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna read a little bit of this just because I want to make sure I kind of get it right and it's complicated. So this goes back to the public hearing that you held earlier. But basically, this resolution, and I won't read the whole resolution, it's here for your reading pleasure. But basically, Government Code Section 421712 permits the district to enter directly into contract for the purchase of energy conservation measures. In this case, a battery backup project, right? If the governing boards make certain findings at a public hearing held at a regular meeting of the board that entered into the energy conservation measure would be in the best interest of the district because the anticipated costs of the district for energy or conservation services provided by the energy conservation facility under the agreement will be less than the anticipated marginal cost to the district. So if you'll recall, back in, I guess it was probably January, when we first brought this to you, we had an urgency behind this because we wanted to get in and apply for the SJIP grants through PG&E. And so at that time, what we brought forward was, was a process by which we could identify vendors who entered through an RFP process to do A and MOU to complete the SJIP applications and get that in so we can lock in the funding under the SJIP grants, which are running out. And B, then enter into contract negotiations to actually bring a contract forward for the actual battery project, right? And through that process, we analyzed what school sites would be appropriate and so on and so forth. But this resolution in particular is for the board to, to basically find that under 421712, that this energy conservation measure, the battery backup project, will create a benefit savings to the district. And so attached is not only the resolution stating all of that in much more technical terms, like putting it in a very summary way, but also the analysis that Terra Verde completed showing that the district would in fact benefit by showing this $252,000. the district would in fact benefit by showing this two hundred and fifty-two thousand R savings. And I don't know if you had a chance to look through it. It's very technical in nature. I have Jen Plethoric here from Terra Verde. She and her team are the ones who completed those, the savings analysis. And so that's just kind of in a nutshell, what this resolution is about and why we're bringing it to you tonight. Are there questions? Or would you like Jen to walk through the assumptions?
So I get that, you know, we needed to show essentially a positive, you know, cost benefit analysis, which this does, which is great. I just want to recall and acknowledge that, you know, I think a lot of our motive was beyond a positive, you know, balance sheet. And also, you know, having some hope that this microgrid could, you know, potentially keep a school open a little bit longer during a blackout. Do we get any sense of whether this capacity, the capacity that they're talking about here at these two schools could do that?
No, we absolutely will. And when we get into the contract, we talk a little bit more about that background. So you're absolutely right. We had a multifaceted approach to why we wanted to do a microgrid, if you will, or battery backup, I call it. Part of it is savings certainly because if we can leverage our solar PV to create and battery backup to create savings, we want to do that clearly. But in order to fund that project, because battery or microgrid projects are not cheap, we really wanted to leverage the S chip grants. So in order to move quickly on that, we had to be able to prove that these projects would show overall savings. And that savings analysis really looks at the cost of the project, the direct project cost, right? But it also looks at savings by not having spoilage, food spoilage. So you'll notice the two school sites we focused on, Pedalum Junior High and Casa. Pedalum Junior High has our central kitchen. And as Ray DeJamo would tell you, when we have had battery power failures before, we've lost up to fifty thousand dollars worth of food. Because a cooler or freezer went without power for a certain amount of time. And so we really focused on the schools that had the greatest opportunity for food spoilage because that is in part how we were able to show some of the savings. Of course, there's lots of other benefits that are less easy to quantify. But under forty-two seventeen point twelve, it was that savings analysis that allowed us to move forward very quickly to try to get in line for the S chip grants. So Jen, I don't know if that covered it from your perspective or if I'm missing anything.
I think that was a great summary.
And the S chip, they're okay. I think I saw that the break even year was like fourteen years out or something like that. They're okay with that?
Go ahead. Yeah, the, yeah, the S chip actually, it's just an incentive program. They don't require you to have savings to give you funding. That's really a facet of the forty-two seventeen approval.
I see.
And the forty-two seventeen was really about us moving very quickly through this process so we could get in line for the S chip funds. That was really kind of the motivation at the time. And that, those applications, Jen, they went in, I want to say by March.
Yeah, it was around that timeframe.
Yeah, so we, those applications went in. And by the way, we've had confirmation that we're eligible for funding on multiple school sites, in particular, though, of course, Casa and Pedalum Junior High. So this resolution in particular is all around that, is all around the forty-two seventeen savings. And then when we get into the contract, we can talk more, which is the next item about the micro grids and kind of why we want to do those, what is the benefit, what are we looking at?
This is exciting.
Yeah, it's really exciting. I just have to say that on top of fifteen EV new buses and charging stations that you're getting for us, you're also getting us backup batteries. But I did, I don't know whether, I think you've answered my question, I think, but on the resolution, but I, I totally misinterpreted it. So I thought that it was a resolution to allow the district to contract directly with scale and then be eligible to that and then be eligible for the funding, the incentive program. Did I, was, am I completely off on that?
No, you're right. It really was a timing thing, though. The forty-two seventeen doesn't really have anything to do with the eligibility for under S chip other than it allowed us to move much more quickly to get in line for funding before it ran out. So you're right, there was a, there was a correlation, but not in the way I think you originally thought.
Okay, thank you.
And I would say we're dipping our toes into the battery, microgrid. You know, doing these two schools. It has been, and Jen, Jen will probably smile or laugh, it has been, it's been an eye-opening process. This whole process has been super informative and eye-opening for me. Like, you don't really realize what goes into a project like this. At least I should say I didn't realize the level of the level of analysis that we go into our facilities and our electrical grids. I mean, literally, we were looking at single line diagrams for every school site to see how the electrical design really, really worked at each school to see how to design these battery projects and if there was a way to carve out systems. So it was super informative and super interesting. And Jen and her partner Laura, they did an amazing job really trying to help guide us through this process and being patient with me as my level of frustration at times was higher than I might want it to be just because it really was, it really was a time-consuming process. But a good process, just it took a lot of time. So my appreciation to Jen and Laura Fudge for being patient with the district and getting us to tonight.
So I'll move to approve resolution twenty-one twenty-two dash oh two.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right, moving on to thirteen point two point two.
So this is really the, the meat and potato of what we're trying to do. And I doubt if you all read every page of this very thick contract, although I would tell you that I know for a fact Jen has and Laura and Kimball Cook, who is our attorney with Orbach Swefen, Orbach Hough and Suarez. So we have spent months, I'm not exaggerating, going through this contract. It's been a very robust process of really making sure that both scale and the district and Terra Verde, who are our partners, have a solid contract where we've fully vetted all of the potential issues that might come up during our implementation of this microgrid project. So it took a lot longer than I think we all thought. We were hopeful, what, Jen, I think we thought we were going to bring this in May originally. But, but it really, it was a good, it was a very good process, very informative. I would say that our attorneys have fully vetted this. Terra Verde has really gone through it with a fine tooth comb. And I would say that we've resolved a lot of issues that I think will help, help us really have a smooth implementation, or at least that's my hope. When we get under contract, which if you award it tonight, then we're going to go under contract and we're going to really start implementing this battery project. Questions? I mean, I, oh, I should go into why, I'm sorry. So part of this is, and it's kind of ironic that tonight we have a red flag warning and we're actually under the possibility. So it's kind of interesting that tonight of all nights, when they're telling us, hey, there might be some blackouts coming and a red flag warning that we're bringing this, because really that was the initial motivation that Gary and I talked about last fall. Was really knowing that we've had three or four years of P S P S events, we've had to write in days. And we did a lot of analysis looking at seven different school sites to say what was viable, what made sense, both from an energy savings perspective. In other words, did, was there a cost benefit analysis? Because these projects are not cheap. But also where, where could a battery system that we actually had the funds to implement get us adequate numbers of hours of backup, like not just ten hours? And I think what we learned, what I learned, and Jen, maybe you already knew this, but what I learned is it depends on the time of the year. Like, if it's dead of winter, right, in January, and we have a P S P S event of whatever kind, there's less sunlight during the day, therefore the batteries are going to get less power from the PV system. Therefore, we might only have twenty hours of battery backup. But if it comes in August where we have sixteen hours of sunlight and we have very little cloud cover, we actually might get as much as, I don't know, Jen, what, thirty or thirty-two? Or if there's no school in session versus there is school in session. So I couldn't tell you right now, we would get X number of hours of battery backup because it'll depend on what's going on at the school site, what is the weather and what is the time of year? In other words, how many hours of sunshine do we have generating the power that's feeding these batteries? Does that make sense? So it fluctuated. Jen and her staff, they actually showed, and maybe it was scaled, and I don't recall, who actually showed kind of a grid of on what day of the year might we expect? Of course, it'd be weather dependent and it fluctuated from day to day. But our goal was to try to get at least twenty-four hours, possibly as much as up to thirty hours. Part of that, we might have some control over because if we can turn off our systems, reduce the load on the battery, that we would then be able to extend that. So part of it is dependent on us and how we handle it. In other words, if we're running A C units, the battery is not going to last as long as we're able to turn off A C units, the battery will last longer. The other thing we looked at is can we, can the battery support the whole school? So one of the things, one of the things we found out with Pedalum High School and why it's not included in this, because Pedalum High School has two different main electrical feeds to the school site. One over by the pool area, the pool weight room, and one between buildings B and C, where the solar system is, so it feeds into that. So even if we put in a battery backup, it wouldn't support the whole school. It would only support from building A over to the solar panels and pick up the science building and the museum. So half the school, it would not even benefit. And in addition to that, it didn't pick up building D, which is where the cafeteria multi are, right? And so getting that savings from the food spoilage meant we would have to spend a few hundred thousand dollars to actually rewire the cafeteria and attach it to the electrical feed on the south side of the campus versus the north side. So we determined it would be not prudent at this time to be able to do that based on the dollars that we would have to spend. So those are some of the things that we looked at. But the main impetus is, can we get back, can we keep our school up and running for twenty to thirty hours? Fully the whole school, maybe not every system, but the whole school. Can we leverage our solar by creating and generating operational savings through electrical savings? I mean, those are the two main factors. Am I missing anything, Jen?
Sounds good.
And why? So I'm sure cost was the issue, but I want to hear it. You know, why two? I know, I get the, I get the selection of these two, these are the most viable and they'll be great test subjects. But Jen, do you get the sense in your assessment of the other schools that those could be viable too? I mean, aside from what Chris just said of Pedalum High, what about the other sites? Show promise, you know, down the road?
Before she answers that and a letter answer about the elementary, Kennelworth was the other school site we spent quite a bit of time looking at. Kennelworth, we did not include because of a couple of compelling reasons. Number one, we're in the solar, the solar PV is in the process of being removed because of the type of technology, because it's damaging the building roofs. And so that, that whole solar system needs to be reevaluated. And we need to determine as a district, are we going to fund replacing the solar system at Kennelworth? And keep in mind, that's the oldest one we have, it's two thousand and four, two thousand and five, Casa Pedalum High or two thousand and ten. So Kennelworth, we determined was not viable because really the solar PV system there needs to be addressed first. And what we would have recommended at that time is we look at battery backup at the same time we look at the solar PV. So that was the whole Kennelworth conversation. Jen, I'll let you talk about the elementaries because we did look at at least one elementary.
Yeah, and all of the sites are viable options. It did come down to us trying to move really quickly to get the S chip incentives secured and being able to use the forty-two seventeen process, which then required savings justification, right? So not having food spoilage consideration at some of the other sites did play into the site selection.
So they don't have central kitchens at the elementary. We ship the food over. The other consideration, though, is we have a much smaller bond issuance at the elementary. And so the bonds themselves, we just don't have enough bond capacity in our current authority to fund a number of systems. And so that was also a consideration. So did that answer your question, children?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I mean, I'm all about progress and this is a step in the right direction. So even if you can't do the whole thing at once, you know, I get that we can. I'm really happy that this is a step forward. And we're going to learn a lot from doing this, I think.
I think this is going to be, like I said, we're dipping our toes in, we're dipping our toes into the microgrid. I mean, you know, and then we're going to also find out what is the true cost, what is the true benefit as we move through time. And as we start to reassess our, some of our solar systems like Kennelworth, Pedalum High School, for example, I also think Pedalum High School's system is undersized compared to the capacity necessary to operate Kennelworth. I now have a much better understanding as to why. Because we really need to put solar panels on the north side of the school that ties into the second electrical feed in order to pick up the gymnasium, in order to pick up the Ag and the Curate Tech Ed buildings and building D. So that's a conversation we should have using our bond funds and then incorporating in a battery system or a microgrid system at the same time, just like with Kennelworth. So I think those two schools in particular are prime for having the solar conversation with a, with a microgrid.
Great.
So, and that would also create good operational savings for the general fund as well. Because at those two school sites, we're spending far more money on electricity than we are at the other two. So with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions on the contract, but our recommendation is to move forward. It is, I just would like to point out, it is a commitment of quite a bit of bond funds. And so, you know, I put down there, this is a two point nine million dollar project. We are looking at S chip funds to help offset the cost of that. Approximately five hundred and twenty, it's a five twenty-five. There is a fifty, we will get another fifty percent over five years. That can also help to offset some of the other costs. We did not factor that in to our costs, our cost analysis. But this is a commitment of bond funds that the board will be making, so with this contract.
I think this ties in perfectly with our goal number four. So I'm very excited to see it finally happening, not finally as in, but just all the pieces are there, it's, it's time.
I have moved to approve the contract with Scale Microgrid Solutions Operations LLC.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Thank you so much. And thank you to just acknowledge Terra Verde for their support in this. I definitely could not have done it without them, so thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Jen.
All right, item thirteen point three point one, resolution opposing the use and sale of e-cigarettes and electronic vaping devices. So Liz. Yes, leaving the ad or does anyone have any questions or comments about this?
I can present it. I wrote it. Portland is like.
I can present it. I wrote it. Portland is like.
I thought it was well written.
I will just read the resolved clauses. The whereas clauses are all of the reasons why smoking and vaping and tobacco are horrible. And why communities of color, low income communities, LGBTQ communities, veterans, people with disabilities. All these different communities use and or are targeted more heavily by big tobacco. So the first resolved clause would be that the board supports the city council under its regulatory authority to take urgent accent, action to amend the City of Tobacco Retailer License Program to address the following. One, prohibit the sale of tobacco products in pharmacies. Two, restrict the marketing, including social media marketing, product placement, coupons and promotional materials. And self-service displays of tobacco products in and from retailers. Three, reduce the concentration and density of tobacco stores. And four, prohibit tobacco retailer license from being issued to or renewed for a business operating too close to a school or other area frequented by youth. The second and last resolved clause is that the district will continue to explore and expand on policies related to providing e-cigarette and electronic vaping device prevention and intervention services for district students. I would just like to speak to why I left out three of the seven that were recommended by CSBA. So for background, part of my learning about politics and cutting my teeth in electoral everything was the soda tax in Berkeley. I helped get students to support getting that passed. But in the process of doing that, I learned a lot about how what we call sin taxes are super regressive. And really can really only impact poor people and low income people. And, you know, for example, the, the line that would put a minimum price on a vapor, what have you. That just means rich kids can still buy it, but poor kids can't. So in my mind, it's kind of tying morality to income, and I think that's just not waters that I really want us to be getting into. So I tried to tie it just to the ones that made the most sense for impacting students equally. I'm not, this is not a hill I'm going to die on if people are really passionate about adding the other three. I'm happy to, but I thought that these four made the most sense and really would send the most cohesive message to city council. But overall, I think the sec, the most important resolved clause is really the second one about how we can help prevent and intervene when our students are using these toxic and cancerous devices and things, which.
We have those services. I mean, one of the things that was approved today by consent was side by side, and I know that's right, Liz. Correct, please correct me if I'm wrong, that's one of the things that they work with kids on?
That's accurate, but in groups, they'll talk with kids about that. And we also have our 2B grant, which addresses that.
And I.
Did a great job. Thank you.
And I just want to clarify and ask Sheldon, I believe you brought this up at the previous meeting where this was presented. I think you asked, like, what is our role and what can we do? And I think it was to bring forth a resolution. And, you know, as Matthew started to say, Matthew, let me finish your statements on this. Like, we're operating within our authority on this. I don't, we can't really demand much of city council, we can ask them, you know, for support.
It's just, it's a resolution on our position. We don't have any authority here.
Yeah, we, we don't have the authority to set prices, do we?
No, and that resolution never called for that. It's our recommendations to city council, and maybe it's just my inner libertarian streak, which I never think I'm going to say, but it's there. Just too much big government.
When you wrote it, I really appreciate it. Thank you, Caitlin.
Well, it does speak to prohibiting the sales of tobacco in pharmacies. I mean, reducing the concentration, asking for these things, which I believe are what Pam was asking for as well. Just maybe worded differently, semantically, but in the end, we're just, we're lending our support to her in these various organizations. And asking city council to do their part as well. Does anyone else have anything to add?
So why not the flavored tobacco products, just for my own edification?
I mean, for my purpose of leaving it out was that an adult should have the right to smoke flavored tobacco if they really want to. I personally wouldn't vote to ban all of that. I mean, again, it's just kind of my personal opinion and preference. I vehemently oppose how it's being marketed to kids. And, you know, I think the smoking age should stay at 21 and all of that. But I, just banning something entirely seems.
Okay, so then, so then your kind of purpose was to narrow it instead of prohibiting or banning it outright. To narrow the access, is that, am I getting that right?
Right, just.
And so like banning vaping products within the city limits.
Right, for me personally, that's just too, too much.
Okay. I don't know.
Yeah, I think this, I think this serves the purpose that Pam asked for. You know, she, she came to us asking for support. And I think what Caitlin wrote up is, is that it's our support for, for this. You know, to, they'll still have to advocate at city council and city council ultimately have to, you know, figure out what actually happens. But this is our support of that effort.
I mean, I do understand, and I probably am, sorry, Caitlin, in favor of banning flavored products, just because that's what the kids are going to use. But I also understand why it was left out. Do we want to move forward with this? We can take a vote on this or we can.
Someone can also.
Able it.
Someone can move right now to amend adding, supporting, adding, supporting banning flavored products if they want.
Oh, as number five?
Yeah.
Okay.
I know, Caitlin, I, I appreciate your reasons why you left it out. I mean, I, I support banning it. But adults have the right to screw up their lungs. You're right. And so my, my concern is, is students.
Right.
And, and I think that this covers that.
Yeah, I, I agree. And also, I think you're right, Caitlin, that second resolved is really, really important. That's where we really come into this, is to provide support and education to our students.
The fourth whereas does talk about the flavored tobacco.
Yeah, just like, like, not to go on this big, like anti-big government rant, but since I'm here. Just because something's illegal doesn't mean it doesn't happen, it's just going to get driven underground. So, uh, just get like, when things are driven underground, it just becomes inaccessible and punishes poor people and brown people and black people, right? Like who, if we ban flavored tobacco, who are the kids that are going to get arrested for having flavored products? Not going to be kids that look like me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Soapbox gone, okay.
So I move to approve 13.3.1 Approval of Resolution 2122-03.
A second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Could I also suggest that we send this?
Yeah.
To all our, just all our, you know, districts, surrounding districts, the county. City. So that everybody knows that we've just passed this.
Newspaper.
Newspaper.
Well, and city council, I mean.
Yeah, I guess that's what I meant by the city, but yeah.
I know what you mean, city, but I think.
I'll send it out unless anyone has any issue with that.
Do your communications thing.
Babe Ashley's some troubles and she put that beautiful video together.
Caitlin, and let, let us know if you need, if you need help or support. You know, I was, Liz and I could easily work with Ashley on that too, so. But if you need help, let us know, otherwise we'll, you're happy, we're happy to have you sending out.
Want to add anything on this superintendent Harris? I had cut you off earlier when you were.
No, you, you, no, what you said was great.
Okay. All right, moving on, comments from the public on discussion slash information items. So same deal as before, we'll open the chat and let Superintendent Harris close it.
Chat is open. Not seen any items, we'll give people about 10 more seconds. If you've got something to put it, please put it in the chat. Along with the item that you're, you're wanting to, to discuss. Okay, I think we can close the chat. No public comments.
Right, so moving on to first reading of the updated Board Governance Handbook and Calendar. Does anyone have any comments? Of course, go ahead, Maddie.
Okay, so I have some editing, which I won't belabor. But, you know, it's semicolons, it's capitalizations. So I just, so, but there's a couple of things I wanted to go over to see whether you agreed with it or if I'm just like being really persnickety English teacher. So that capitalizations on district, it should all be consistent. And it should be a capital D. Capital S for superintendent and capital B for board. Is that an agreement that it should be changed?
Why capital D for district? You say our district.
Because it's, it doesn't, it isn't always our district, it's the district.
I mean, I don't.
You know, it doesn't, it just, it's inconsistent.
Yeah.
And so it just has to be one way or the other, just from my brain.
I totally agree with you, it needs to be consistent, as does the punctuation.
Yeah.
And I have no problem with capitalizing all through.
Yeah, that's why we're doing this first reading.
So you want me to do more?
I know you have more.
Okay, so I actually looked this up on it's a matter of style in terms of semicolons at the end of lists. So, which shocked me because it didn't used to be in matter of style. So, and there's just a couple of places where there has been. Let me see, like on page.
Well, on page five, they're all periods for that.
Yeah, but that's okay, they can, you can have a period, it's, it depends on how it's introduced. So like in the governance team responsibilities on page four. It says to operate effectively, the board, capital B, must have unity of purpose and semi, and colon. So, or it can be a comma there, but colon is fine. And then you have eight different things, keep the district focused on learning. And at the end of each one of those is a period, and that's where they should have it be a semicolon.
Okay, Maddie, how about this? How about?
Why don't I take it and go through?
With who, Matthew, before the next?
We can, Maddie, Maddie, why don't you and I sit down? And, and or Ellen, I don't know if you have edits as well. Sit down, can put the, the document, the live document up, we can make the, the edits to, to Babs is to, you know, Babs, the draft.
Yeah.
And.
It should take.
Edit it.
Yeah, it should take like 10 minutes.
Yeah.
But that, but one thing, a lot, aside from the editing, the other thing was that I noticed that the objectives were not listed. They just have the our goals. So I'm on page three. So the district goals are there, but you know how we developed objectives for each one of the goals? I don't know whether you want that to be that specific. You know, because there are specific goals for the year. But I would, if we don't have the specific goals in the actual governance handbook, I really want this in there. Because this is so cool and it's so, it just kind of, it, it really, as we talked about before. It just zeros in, focuses on what we're doing as a district. And so you can, we could, if we have questions, we can just, you know, direct people to the handbook and it's going to be in there.
Maddie, when you say this, what, what are you referring?
This is the document that you made up, with the mission statement on it, the core values. And then the board goals and underneath each, underneath each goal is the objectives.
It's nice and succinct. It's like one page where everything is.
Okay, yeah, let's, so again, let's meet. Make sure that all, everything is in there. We'll bring it back for a second read at the next board meeting.
Good.
Thank you.
I just had.
And Maddie, Maddie, it needs to be around the, the baby schedule when the baby gets, when the baby.
Hey, if you're busy babying, Maddie and I can do it.
We'll meet, all, all of time.
You can bring the baby with you.
Perfect.
Um, so I was just a small on the governance calendar, just that we get sworn in in January. I think other districts do December, but that was the only thing I had to add on that.
We always did January.
Yes, we do. Will you, Maddie, are you, will you take that note down so when we meet, we can make sure we change that as well? Okay.
Anything else? All right, moving on to item 15.1.2 William Settlement, Fourth Quarter Report. Visit and review of McKinley School. Jason Sutter.
We have nothing, no complaints, nothing to report on this one.
Fantastic, all right. Item 15.2.1 First Reading Amended Board Policy 5123 Promotion slash Acceleration slash Retention.
So, yes, this is me. So existing law requires that the governing board of a school district adopt policies regarding pupil promotion and retention. And so essentially, because we have that saying that the board needs to adopt it recently. LEAs, our district has always had the authority and flexibility to act without state law. But Assembly Bill 104, which was signed into law on July 1st, 2021 by the governor, expands learning and credit recovery options for students who have suffered learning loss during the 2021 school year. In short, there's three sections of this law that we need to adhere to. And so I have updated the board policy because it refers to retention in this law. So that, so that AB 104 is reflected. You'll notice the piece that it's in is just showing that it's a temporary thing for this school year to help mitigation of learning loss with COVID. So the first thing that AB 104 requires us to do is grade retention. So any families of students who were enrolled in grades K to 11 for the 2021 school year. So this year can submit a written request for their child to, well, last year. So can submit a written request for their child to be retained in the same grade if half of the students' grades were deficient. And then from there, you know, it's up to our administrative team, our counselors, to meet with families, to show families, research about retention, to make a team decision if that's the most appropriate thing for the student. So that's, that's the first thing that AB 104 is requiring of schools this year. The second allows for a grade change to pass. The second allows for a grade change to pass no pass. So families of high school students can submit a grade change form, which is posted on our website, to change letter grades attained during the last school year, twenty twenty-one, to a pass or a no pass grade on their transcript without negatively affecting their GPA. And obviously, the state is working with UCC, CSU system on what, you, what the impact of that is gonna be. So that's the second thing that is now written into the board policy, again, for this finite period of time. And then the third thing that AB one oh four allows us to do is students who were enrolled in their third or fourth year of high school during the twenty twenty-one school year. So the ele- last year's eleventh and twelfth graders, and who are not on track to graduate either this year or last year, so twenty twenty-one or twenty-one twenty-two school year, are allowed to complete the California State Minimum High School Graduate Requirements. So essentially, they, students, Pedalima City Schools requires two hundred twenty credits to graduate. The minimum high school California graduation requirements are a hundred thirty credits. And what this is allowing students to do is to graduate with just the hundred and thirty credits. And they get a Pedalima City Schools diploma. The differences in areas, we mark it as a um, a G one oh four, showing that it's connected to Assembly Bill one oh four, much like we do when we do credit reduction for AB twenty-one twenty-one, which is the one for military families, foster youth, except, you know, migrant students, um, and incarcerated students. So we're, it's the same, it's a similar credit reduction coding in areas. With that, um, that's what's written into that policy this, this month. It's just a first read. But know that it is legislation that we are enacting this. We're meeting with families who have requested about retention. We're, um, doing the pass no pass grade changes for those that have submitted the form on our website. And we are currently, um, looking into presenting to students the opportunity to graduate with a hundred and thirty credits rather than two hundred twenty, letting them know that that doesn't necessarily, you know, prepare them for the, or allow them to get into the UCCSUs right offhand. But they could always go a different track and maybe do junior college and then go to UCCSU. So there's still opportunity for them with this high school diploma. So that is AB one oh four. I also, as a bonus, even though we didn't have to, I added in AB thirteen fifty because that's also for a finite amount of time. And what that does is it allows last year's seniors the same credit reduction opportunity to get a diploma with a hundred and thirty credits. So that, that's what's in there.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you, Liz.
That was interesting.
Yeah. There's, I mean, there's been so many like bills and things like thrown at us like this summer. So, or in the past, like, six months, to thank, again, all of you guys for just being so on top of all of these things.
And explaining so well and really clarifying.
Yeah, and for your patience, when I frantically email or text you, what is this new thing? So, thank you very much. All right.
It keeps me on my toes.
Moving on to future business. All right, superintendent Harris, wanna talk about some of these things?
Sure. So, future business. We have social emotional learning and arts presentation on October twelfth. Uh, Ellen and I are working with a presenter, so we're gonna come in and do that. We then left on the avid program information, school site demographics, and PCS student form. What we forgot to do, I'm realizing now, is attach them to a board. Well, what, I guess, once, once it, once we do a second read at the next board meeting, we should, that we'll start to attach, you know, these to board, um, agenda items, so.
Thank you. Does anyone have any comments or anything on this?
Which the, uh, speaking forum, how's that going?
So I, we, our wellness coordinator starts on August twenty-third, and that's gonna be the first thing on the docket. I'm hoping she'll coordinate with our, I haven't talked about this part, but with our family engagement coordinator on it, to see sort of what that, that will look like. Um, but she'll be the, the point person and the lead on getting the form together.
Thank you.
Great. All right. I think that's it, all right.
Thank you all for everything you've been doing.
Yeah.
Maddie.
I thought it was October.
Oh yeah, when does that, uh, expire? Is that next month?
Brown Act Flexibility.
Expires in October.
Expires in October.
Currently, unless they extend it, you never know.
Great.
Okay.
So, so really, I mean, it, it's really a question for the board. I mean, we, you could say, yeah, we're gonna come back to the next, the next in-person, the next meeting. Or we're gonna wait and see what happens with the Brown Act Flexibility and, and, you know, it, we would need to come back in October. At this point, according to the Brown Act Flexibility, we do need to come back in October. That may change, so.
I don't, we la- last left it as this would be the last fully online one. Uh, you know, since schools are in person, thought was, we should be too. Uh, but with, uh, with the option of the public participating through online. I thought that's where we last left it.
Yeah, I thought we did as well. I think we're just trying to work out the tech aspect of it.
We've, I've talked with, with, with Dave Fisher, where it's, should, should, shouldn't be a problem.
My only hesitation on the next one is just, you know, COVID. Um, it's, it's, it just seems, you know, it's inside, it's for hours. Um, I mean, not so mu- I mean, it, it to bring the public in. Um, there's a whole issue around vaccinations and whether they need proof of vaccinations. If, if we, are, are we going to require that? Um, if not, I mean, there needs to be a lot of communication with the public about it and what our policies are. Do we have enough time for that? I, I could go for the, the twenty-eighth, is it the last one, where we have some time to actually, um, formulate some of these policies.
Yeah, because there's, you know.
We need, I don't think we need to.
Well, a mask policy, you do. I mean, not a mask, I mean, a vaccination.
Public meeting, I don't, uh, not seeing that. I mean, it's different than going to school, but, you know, this is a public meeting.
Well, there are public venues that are retail that are requiring vaccinations to get in, so.
Um, they're not public.
Yeah, they're public. You mean free?
They're private institutions.
They're private institutions.
We're, we're public.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we have to look at, like, we don't, again, we don't wanna like overreach or, um, go against uh, CDPH guidelines, especially since it's happening at our schools, but we also wanna be safe. Um, I mean, as long as we get, you know, people's information as they come in, require that they be masked and distanced.
A part of the week around capacity, right? Capa- capacity in the boardroom, how many student, how many members of the public can, can fit, you know, reasonably in, inside the boardroom. There are some, you know, I, I agree, I mean, school, you know, schools are back, board meetings should be back, but we just, we didn't, we need to do it in a safe way. I mean, just like in schools, classrooms, you have a set number of students, you've seen, you know, same group of kids, this is really, you're inviting.
Right.
Many, many peo- you know, could any, anyone could show up. So you just have to be, we have to be clear about what, what that will look like. So we can, we can put something together, I mean.
Well, and our, our boardroom is, to me, feels like very tight quarters, and there's, there's no windows. Um, opening the door, I don't think is enough. Um, it would make me really uncomfortable unless we have, you know, maybe air purifiers in there or something.
We do have Apache two thousand, a couple of them in the boardroom that we're using, we use it for meetings.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
Yeah, and I think we definitely need to be safe, uh, but I think it's imperative that we come go back in person, because our schools are.
Yeah, I agree, but I, I, at the same time, you know, I want air movement in there.
Yeah, and the times we have met at the district office, like Matthew and Chris had the air scrubbers going.
We, we'll have that, we, we would have that.
Yeah, I think the probably a bigger issue is, um, like distance. Well, I guess we don't have to distance anymore, huh, even up on the dimes.
Well, we are kind of distancing.
Roll back, maybe. Okay.
And we, just like, you know, courtesy distancing, we would have, you know, we definitely would follow this California Department of Public Health guidance, uh, masking. And right now.
And we could, we could also limit the number of chairs. I mean, you know, we could space the number of chairs, and we could reduce the number of chairs in the boardroom to kind of space people out.
Because it, it gets pretty packed in there during the student of the month. Yeah, and then, and then everybody leaves, but, you know.
Right.
So, my hearing, we're gonna be back, we're coming back on the fourteenth? That would?
I mean, I think so.
I'd like to.
We don't have, again, it's gonna be packed, but we don't have any distancing requirements indoors anymore.
That's true. That's true.
I mean, maybe if we're just like, hey, can you limit it to your immediate household? And maybe one of us can read the announcement, instead of asking parents to send, you know, their child somewhere else indoors to read the announcement. Yeah, I'm sorry, the student of the month, blurb.
Or they could participate online.
Right, yeah, that's great. And the families could too, that's a good point.
And they should have that option.
To, yeah.
Yeah, so maybe, um, to put together a communication thing, yay, we're back. Um, and these are the conditions that, you know, yeah, and that we're gonna have access also. Because I really like the access, the, um, online.
Well, yeah, I mean, our meetings have been very well attended since we've been on Zoom, much better than they were when we were in person.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll think through, I mean, if, if everyone's in agreement, we, we can think through protocols and um, what the student of the month can look like as well, so that we can limit the number, number of people, but also have it open to the public.
Sounds good.
Okay, fourteen.
All right, with that, we are going to adjourn. You all, see you next time in person.
Good night.